Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Galt City Council Meeting, November 5th, 2013, 7 o'clock. Oh, that's right, we just come back from closed session. You have anything to report, Mr. Barry?
No, I can't report this evening.
Oh. You just told me that, too. Um, you want to give your roll call?
Okay, councilmembers Payne, Campion, Cruz, Singleton, Powers, who's not feeling well, so he's still recovering.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, Ms. Powers is still recovering from surgery. Hopefully, this next meeting, she'll be back with us. Uh, we're gonna do a silent prayer, and I would ask our, our good Lieutenant Vesuzi to lead us in a bunch of allegiance after our silent prayer, please.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
If you want to read the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cii.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay, we have any agenda approval additions or additions? Anybody? And we have a presentation, Water Treatment Plant Solar Project Overview and Performance Report. Hit it.
Vice Chair and Counsel, we're gonna give you sort of a two-year look back at the performance of a visionary project that your counsel through several years ago, and Mr. John Griffin, sort of an embedded staff consultant of the city, will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Counsel. Steve reported the purpose of tonight's presentation is to give a report on the power supply at the solar array and also a report on the cost savings the city has seen over the first two years of operation of the facility. As we've all seen before, here's an aerial photo of the wastewater treatment plant property, and the solar array itself is bounded in red. A little background on the project, back in 2010, the city hired Montgomery Watson-Harzett to prepare a feasibility study on use of solar for power at the wastewater plant. City decided to obtain proposals for providing solar power and entered into negotiations with Sun Power and executed a contract back in March of 2011. Shortly thereafter, construction started and the facility was brought online in December of 2011. And so that's what we see in the area now, under by red. The contract that we entered into is termed a power purchase agreement, and so the agreement itself establishes the terms between Sun Power and the city for operation of the facility, construction and operation of the facility. There were three significant benefits that were part of the agreement that was negotiated. Most importantly was the negotiated power rate. That was, that power rate freezes the power costs for power for 20 years, and that, as you will see later, is very beneficial to the city compared to what smud rates are and will be in the future. And also, the agreement allowed for lease revenues to the city for, than leasing their property where the solar array is located. And here's a kind of a zoom-in picture of the solar array site, and you can see it's still finishing up construction, there's the construction equipment on the side. Some high-level information on the solar array itself, as you saw, it was constructed in one of the ponds, a five-acre pond. There's a total of eighty-three arrays that make up the solar farm, and those arrays actually are rotating so that they will follow the sun and they will generate, maximize their power generation. And here are a couple photos, this photo and this other photo. Both are generally looking more to leave, give you a picture of the solar array after a construction was complete, and this is a picture back in the spring, as you can see the grass is nice and green.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, that doesn't look like our area.
No, it is not that way now.
Okay, thank you.
So why should the city move forward with a solar array and agreements? Again, first and foremost, the benefit of a reduced power cost. And not only does that power cost reduce, it's locked in place for 20 years. And because of that, we're able to reduce demands on, for smud power to augment the array, and again, as power rates are frozen for 20 years and smud rates increase, we will continue to see further savings year after year after year. And just for comparison, what you have here is a table of our rates, and the way our account is structured with smud is we pay based not only on time of, on what month it is, but also time of day. There's a total of five different rate categories, and I'll pick one, for example, which is the summer super peak from 2 to 8 p.m. So that's typically when, you know, smud sees their highest demand, businesses are using air conditioners and homes using air conditioners, and the rate per kilowatt hour is almost eighteen cents. And below the table, you'll see what our power purchase agreement rate is. That rate is a little under 8.7 cents per kilowatt hour. Now remember, that rate is frozen for the next, it's been two years now, that rate continues to be frozen for the next eighteen years. Smud rates, you know, although they don't go up every year, they will go, they will be increased when smud deems it necessary. As you can see, just based on current rate that we pay now, our solar rate, our solar power costs are cheaper than all of their rates except for the nighttime, winter off-peak rate. And couldn't tell you how, but fairly soon, we expect that even that rate will be higher than what we pay for solar power. And now we're gonna get to some of the pretty pictures. The first one is a comparison of power, and at the wastewater plant, there's two power sources. We have the solar array, which is our primary power, and that's augmented by smud. And so the picture in front of you here, the blue bars go by month, and that shows the power produced by the solar array, and then the red bars identify the power purchased from smud. And as we would expect, the, in the wintertime, we would buy more power from smud, and in the summertime, we would buy less power from smud, and then vice versa with the solar array. You can see that it produces almost two and a half times in the summer what it produces for power in the winter.
And can you remind me, when did we go online again?
We went online-
In this comparison, because how long is this comparison?
This is, we went online in mid-December of 2011.
Eleven, okay.
And so this comparison here will start from, starts from January of 2012, so we could have a, almost two calendar years.
Okay.
And this graph here further breaks down where the solar power that is produced, where does that, where does that use? And the blue, the blue bars identify the solar power that is used at the wastewater plant, and then the red bars identify the excess power that the city doesn't use and sells off to smud. And as you can see, in the summertime, which was what we expected, is that the solar array produces a lot more power than we need, and we're able to sell some of that excess power to smud. One of the benefits of that is that the rate we receive as a credit is their current rate for that time of day. So we don't receive a credit based on what our PPA is, we receive a credit based on their type. So we sell them power during summer super peak, we sell, they give us credit at eighteen cents per hour. Now here's, here's our meat of the presentation. What you have here is a cost comparison. The gray line is a hypothetical cost. What if we didn't have the solar array, and we continue to buy power from smud? What would our cumulative or aggregate cost be since we brought the array online? And the blue line itself is our actual cost. What do we pay until we go smud and the solar array? And as you can see, there is, we're already at a good cost savings of about forty thousand dollars for the first year. And what's interesting, in looking at that, around November, December, our actual cost line goes flat. And the reason it's flat is smud carries our credits for the excess power we sell them, they carry it through the year, and then at the end of the year, we get that rebate back. And so what we saw last year, what we expect to see this year, is that for the November bill, the December bill, the bill for this, for November, and the next month, we will see almost a zero bill for a month or two months, while if we had smud power, we would continue to be paying twenty thousand dollars a month. And so for the first two years, we're projecting an average savings of about forty thousand dollars. And again, as smud rates, their rates, and our rates do the same, we expect that to come quite a bit. So in conclusion, again, as Steve mentioned, we want to recognize and commend the council for making the decision to move forward with implementing the solar array at the wastewater plant, and also recognize the planning department, they're the ones that saw the project from Sert with the study with Montgomery Watson-Harzett through completion and construction. So they get the kudos for actually seeing the project, so we just get to be the ones to talk about how much money we're saving. Anything like that, or any questions the council may have.
Anybody have any question?
I know it's kind of far-fetched, especially considering the timeline, but in 20 years, I assume we're gonna renegotiate. Will we renegotiating at smud's current rates at that time, or how will we go about that?
The way the agreement is structured is, there's a couple timelines where we can purchase the array from the provider. And if we decide to buy it, I think it's ten years or fifteen years, we could pay the, there's a price set in the agreement, and after 20 years, it just becomes ours. So we would then operate and maintain the array, be part of the price, their staff actually operate and maintain. If there's any equipment failure, they replace the equipment. And after 20 years, it becomes on us, and these arrays last twenty to thirty years.
Maybe if I, I'm reading, another part to that question is, our contracted rate is with the Sun Power-
Correct.
And that's what we're locked into. Statute dictates what smud, or PUC dictates what smud can charge, and we basically, as was pointed out, whatever the rate is, is the credit that they have to give us for anything that is weled to them.
That was the question, thank you.
So as their rates go up, that becomes a bigger rate.
And then after 20 years, and the agreement's over, we keep the array, we're actually not paying for power. But, you know, as Councilwoman Campion said, you know, these last twenty, twenty-five are likely thirty years, so.
Right, or add out?
Yeah.
Anybody else? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was very informative. Before we move on, I just wanna, just wanna recognize Liberty Ranch students for being out here and there doing a report for class, so I hope you guys are listening close, and I'm glad you guys are here. Liz, we have public comment?
Yes, under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. Joe Pryor?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Joe Pryor, I live at 1220 Amador, down at the end of East Amador, and I've wondered for a couple of years, why over at Roundstone Park, on Trafalgar, there are signs for Dead Man's Gulch or Creek, or whatever it's called, saying it's a nature preserve, please stay out. And on my side, where I live, they rip around with motorcycles, pickup trucks, Jeeps, and just tear it all up, out in there. I mean, I don't think that, it's not much of a nature, of a nature preserve with the traffic I see going by at my end. So I'm wondering why the city couldn't put up some signs on my side saying, hey, this is a nature preserve, stay out of here. It might help it if, I think it was last year, I saw a little kid get hurt out there, and the ambulance actually had to go out, so I don't think it's too safe. I mean, I call it like the nature preserve motocross out of where I live. So I'd like to see some signs go up, and maybe a little bit more, I feel like my call, when there is some people out there tearing things up occasionally, my main, and what gets me is that they tear up my private road crossing, which I have to maintain and repair in a private driveway that I have to put gravel on, which is what my main concern, but that, I think I sometimes get the blow off from the police department when I phone them, you know, I don't use 911, I call on the regular number and go, hey, some people are out here tearing stuff up, and it's like, yeah, okay. I think they know me, but they want to have a checkmark by my name, and I don't see officers responding quite as well as they used to. I mean, one time, there was an article in the newspaper saying that they had a dirt bike, and they were gonna chase people down, and I've never seen a cop on a dirt bike out there, and I've called quite a few times trying to get stuff done. And since we're talking about East Amador, it could use a little bit of asphalt patch out there. I called Aiden and told him about it, and never heard back. Usually he responds, but the road is getting pretty creaky out there. I think it's a big garbage truck that goes up and down, and for the one garbage truck that were down there at the end of the road, it's like, he cares for the road, but anyway, that's all I have.
I'm unclear as to the location.
I live at the end of East Amador Avenue. I think it's what's normally called the knock, I'm in the county.
Oh.
Right.
You know, so it's, I might, on the last stop on the road.
You asked you to go to that dirt road to get out to your place, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's gravel.
Well, gravel, yeah. And I, I'm sorry, Ms. Payne, do you have something?
No, I wasn't sure where he was talking about.
And I think the article you're referring to, it refers to the dirt bike was, the PD was considering getting dirt bikes to, to try to deter some of these youngsters from being a dead man's gulch and also riding along the railroad tracks, like we had some
a number of warnings and actually some citations as well.
Okay, good. issues with that, too, so.
So usually, the peak problem times are in the spring, but we will definitely let
And our officers, when you call them, they do have to go out and follow up, so any time
our staff know and we'll take the appropriate action.
you call, it's not something that they can ignore.
We all talk to our citizens about that.
They are required to go out and make a- Thank you, Lieutenant.
And most of them-
I just make one more.
A determination of what's going on out there.
Anyway, I think some signs saying it's a nature preserve on both sides of Dead Man's Yeah, and most of them are ripping up and down Amador on the pavement without helmets, and I mean, that's way dangerous, some of the stuff they do out there. Creek would be great.
I don't know how many are gonna read that sign as they're zipping by it on their bike, but- Not to put you in the hot seat, Lieutenant Vesuzi, but have you heard any of these
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a nature preserve, and I don't know which sign those are, but it's-
issues? I'm sorry to call on you back there, but you might have to come on the microphone
It says keep out.
I know what, I know what he's talking about, on the backside of Roundstone, there's
and stop.
some public property there that is marked nature preserve, there's a little, a little wire fence there to keep people out, and it's marked nature preserve, and the city owns that, it's part of that park. The area you're referring to is private property, and so that's the difference. We can't mark somebody's private property as a nature preserve.
But they use the private property to get to Dead Man's Creek, and that's concerning your property, I think. Dead Man's Creek is yours, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly which area. I thought you were referring to the whole large, the dirt lot area, the other side of the railroad track.
I lived there thirty-seven years, so I know everything out there. So I know it's private, but they're using the railroad access to get down there and recab it on, at least what on the other side you say is a nature preserve, so I've always wondered about it.
A portion of that is an easement where the city doesn't own it, though, as well.
Yeah.
So the underlying ground is still held by the property owner, simply the city has an easement for drainage purposes, at least on a portion of it.
Well, I know you went in there and took it, and then you gave them a choice on the matter, you dug the trench.
For drainage purposes.
Yeah, I guess. Well, not for motocrosses and pickups, maybe, but-
Right.
I think it is marked private property, and so we'll continue to enforce it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Now we go to the information consent calendar. You wanna read those, Liz, please, one, two, and three?
Tonight, the first one, approval of the special and regular meetings of October 15th, 2013. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants, and number three, adoption of the zoning ordinance amendment, adding section 18.74, reasonable accommodations.
I'm sorry, let me read them over, now that my mic's on.
The mic's on.
I'm sorry, new mics, we, okay, three items. The first item, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of October 15th, 2013. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants, and number three, adoption of the zoning ordinance amendment, adding section 18.74, reasonable accommodations.
And call for vote, please.
Sorry, I mean-
Turn. We have plenty of time.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to the Public Works Department. Authorized City Manager to Execute Contract Amendment Number One to the Agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated for Engineer Services for Quiet Zone Implementation.
Ms. Quaid Owens will be making a brief presentation on this?
Very briefly, CDM Smith was hired by the city to facilitate implementation of supply of zone. Staff was to provide the design for the construction. The California Public Utility Commission, the CPUC, provides all, approves all improvements within the railroad right of way. While working with the CPUC, they require profile sheets, which requires the city to do surveying. Both the surveying work and the development of the profile sheets require specific expertise outside of the current city's ability, and thus, the request to amend CDM Smith's contract to do this performance work. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions from council?
No, no touching.
Liz, you wanna read the recommended action, please?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to, number one, execute amendment number one to the agreement for consulting services with CDM Smith Incorporated in the amount of thirty thousand ninety dollars for the quiet zone implementation, and number two, authorize the project contingency of seven thousand dollars for the quiet zone implementation.
And take some motions?
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call, Liz, please.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, we don't have any scheduled matters tonight, so we'll move to regular meeting. And we have the Human Resources Department, Ms. Sislaw. And turn, new microphone. Yep, very great.
City Council before you is the recommendation to add verbiage to the city of Galt job descriptions, which we believe would allow for more flexibility in our hiring process, and what the words would actually say is any combination of experience and training that would provide the required knowledge and abilities and qualifying, a typical way to obtain the required knowledge and abilities would be. And then below that on the job description would be the education, experience, what's currently already on our job description. So what that allows for is to have a little bit of flexibility that, for example, if someone has a bachelor's degree and only one year of experience in something, but the position requires five years' experience, for example, we can look at their overall background and really see if they match the needs of the position, because sometimes our minimum requirements are so stringent that we feel that we may be missing out on some good candidates, and we really wanna take a look at everyone individually and what they bring to the position, taking their experience and their education into consideration.
Okay.
Any questions?
There we go, does anybody have any questions?
I think it's a good idea, I think it's overdue.
Absolutely.
Great.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, will, take any motions?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
You wanna take a vote, please?
Okay. Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, move to the Public Works Department. Authorized City Manager to Execute Contract Amendment Number One to the Agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated for Engineer Services for Quiet Zone Implementation.
Ms. Quaid Owens will be making a brief presentation on this?
Very briefly, CDM Smith was hired by the city to facilitate implementation of supply of zone. Staff was to provide the design for the construction. The California Public Utility Commission, the CPUC, provides all, approves all improvements within the railroad right of way. While working with the CPUC, they require profile sheets, which requires the city to do surveying. Both the surveying work and the development of the profile sheets require specific expertise outside of the current city's ability, and thus, the request to amend CDM Smith's contract to do this performance work. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions from council?
Nope, no touching.
Liz, you wanna read the recommended action, please?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to, number one, execute amendment number one to the agreement for consulting services with CDM Smith Incorporated in the amount of thirty thousand ninety dollars for the quiet zone implementation, and number two, authorize the project contingency of seven thousand dollars for the quiet zone implementation.
And take some motions?
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call, Liz, please.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
No communications? Okay, we'll adjourn from regular meeting to the Galt Successor Agency.
Ready for rush?
Bless you.
Okay, board members Singleton?
Yes, roll call, please.
Board members Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Campion?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Okay, you have any public comment?
I have no speaker sheet.
You wanna see what we got, the information consent agenda? Can you read those, please?
We have two items tonight, approval, approval of the minutes of the meeting of October 15th, 2013, and number two, approval of the successor agency warrant.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Board members Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned to Galt Successor Agency, and we convene to the Galt City Council meeting, and we have city clerk's report.
Okay, two items tonight. The first one, I will be looking for two actions. The first one, to adopt a resolution continuing the Independence Day Celebration Ad Hoc Committee, and the second item, to appoint two council members to serve on the 2014 Independence Day Celebration. In August 2011, the city council, at a city council meeting, council formed the committee and later appointed Mayor Powers and Vice Mayor Singleton to serve on the 2012 Independence Day Celebration Committee. Mayor Powers and Vice Mayor Singleton have been serving on this committee since 2012, and tonight, Mayor Powers has expressed an interest to continue serving on the committee. She sent an email in and asked that she be reappointed to the committee. So tonight, first of two actions, I'm looking to adopt a resolution continuing the Independence Day Celebration Ad Hoc Committee. So I'll look for a motion on that. She sent an email in and asked that she be reappointed to the committee. So tonight, first of two actions, I'm looking to adopt a resolution continuing the Independence Day Celebration Ad Hoc Committee. So I'll look for a motion on that.
Move. Second.
Okay. Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Thank you. And at this time, looking for two councilmembers to serve on the Independence Day Celebration. It is a city council appointment as a body.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I move Mayor Powers to continue and Vice Mayor Singleton.
Second.
You ready for me to call her?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
You've been appointed.
And the reservations. And that was, no, none at all. I have enjoyed it thoroughly. That was.
That's for two thousand fourteen. Oh, yeah, you started.
It was eleven.
Two thousand twelve was the first celebration.
Okay, celebration. I know I've done at least two of those things. So anyway, thank you.
Better, better.
Thank you very much. And I hope we continue to bring you a good Independence Day Celebration. It's a lot of fun. Okay.
All right, one more.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Next item, we do have some vacancies on committees and some letters of interest. So I will take each committee separately. First, your staff report is the beautification committee. There are three vacancies to be filled tonight. Mayor Powers and councilmembers Payne and Campion each have an appointment. Councilmembers have two letters of interest before you, one from Frank Dwell and one from Janine St. Clair. So at this time, I would look for appointments from councilmembers Payne and Campion.
I would go ahead and appoint Frank. I can talk to him, he expressed his interest in that.
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is. And it doesn't talk to me anymore.
Okay.
Frank Dwell.
Frank Dwell.
And I would appoint Janine.
Okay. Thank you. Next committee is the commission, is commission on aging. We do have one letter of interest, and councilmember Campion has that vacancy.
Yes, and I talked, I talked to Mr. Nicewoner, and he would like to serve, and I would therefore appoint him.
Okay, great. And that's George Nicewoner?
Yes, George Nicewoner.
I didn't say the name. Okay, last is the youth committee. We have one vacancy. Mayor Powers has that vacancy. She did send me an email, and I believe council has that email in front of them. She would like to appoint Lisa Klotz to the committee. So if there are no problem with that, you can go ahead and make that appointment. And I have a couple reminders. On November eleventh, our city offices will be closed in honor of Veterans Day. On November thirteenth, there is a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting in the council chambers at seven PM. And on November fourteenth, there's a planning commission meeting in the council chambers at six thirty PM. That's all I have tonight.
Okay. Is there any comments by staff tonight? Wake up, Jason.
I'm looking across the aisle here.
Mr. Winquist?
I was asked by councilmember Payne how things are going on the roundabout. So I'll give you all a quick snapshot update that I gave her. And they're moving dirt, making dust, and cracking a few eggs to make the omelette up there. We are a little behind schedule, and are working to try to get back on schedule. And primarily was the result of initial utility relocation delays, where one utility is waiting on the other to get their poles so they can move over and do the joint pole exercise. And so that little pole dance, in air quotes, is finally done, and we're moving forward. Hopefully, we'll get back on schedule if the weather will hold for us.
Thank you.
Got to be honest, you couldn't tell. I mean, it looks like they've got the base on the north side set.
Yeah, they'll, obviously, they don't want to keep moving, paving in and out. They'll try to get enough ready where they can make a production days run, if I'm seeing. Glenn is our project manager, so she can make eyes at me if I get anything wrong here. But they're working on the northwest and what would be sort of the southwest quadrant, and they'll get in and get some paving down, and they can get that reopened, probably two, three weeks away from reopening the northwest quadrant and do the rolling closure.
There's a knife.
So it's all weather dependent. And at some point in time, we will probably have to button up the site due to weather with the winter. So the tentative schedule for paving, as I found out this morning, was they are hoping to pave the northwest quadrant, and then also a portion of the southwest quadrant the week of November eighteenth. It's all dependent upon weather. What they're trying to do is close everything up before it starts raining. Most likely, it depends upon how quickly they can get in there to do the work. The following week is Thanksgiving, so we have a short week. And we're actually starting to talk about when we are looking at buttoning up for the winter because of the fact that we've hit unsuitable soil. When you open up the road, if there's unsuitable soil, it gets wet, it rains, it just becomes a mess extremely expensive to deal with. So we're trying to hedge our bets on the, on the weather to try and get as far as we possibly can before incurring additional costs associated with construction, associated with weather.
So you say incompatible, you're talking about compaction area?
Unsuitable is soil that has too much moisture and is not very good for compaction. So typically, what you deal with, with unsuitable is there's one of two ways. You lime-treat it, which has other issues associated with it, unless you lime-treat everything. Or you over-escalate and fill more. So when you over-escalate and fill more, clearly, there's costs associated with it. You have an area that's opened up, has unsuitable, it rains, it increases your area of unsuitable. And so you kind of have just sort of a mess. So we're trying to, you know, we're watching the forecast every single day to see how far we can get and when we have to button up the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Any other staff? Since there's only one, two, three, four, or five of you here. Nobody else? Okay, comments by council? Mr. Campion, you have a sign? Mr. Cruz?
We've not, not a thing.
Ms. Payne?
I have a few things.
I can't figure it out. It's best to relax.
The Galt community alliance that was newly formed, that's made up of the commission on aging, beautification committee, youth committee, and the community of character coalition had their first meeting. It was very successful. In fact, we are meeting again on November the eighteenth. We've had additional clubs and organizations have sat in on the meeting to share their upcoming events. So if you are interested, it's open to the public. The meeting again is November eighteenth. It'll be at the Parks and Rec building at six o'clock. Also, I attended the task meeting that cities and schools together and gave a report on preventing childhood obesity. It seemed to be well received, and we will continue it, I think, at our next meeting. And also attended the comprehensive economic development strategy, better known as SED. And we talked about our economic development strategy, but we also emphasized that we believe our agricultural resources should be looked at to see how we can leverage it. And finally, I spent the day at the New Hope Dairy. And we had a grand opening for their digester, which will be producing electricity through smud. And it's actually, John, better than the solar panels because there's no off time. As long as you have cows, they do their thing, and they produce energy. But, you know, I'm joking about it, but Galt now has three dairies that have these digesters producing electricity. And it's, it's quite unusual for a town this size to have that many digesters working for us. So we were well recognized by two or three TV channels. And so it's a good thing for Galt. And that's all I have.
Awesome. I'd like to first of all, thank Lieutenant Vesuzi for being here in place of the chief tonight. Thank you, Lieutenant. I'd also like to thank the students from Liberty High. It's good to see you guys out there, wherever it is. And just so you know, if you guys ever have any questions of any of us council, all you got to do is contact us, and we'll try to make an appointment to meet with you. So if you ever have any questions, don't hesitate to call on us. And that's all I have. If nobody else has anything, we will adjourn at seven forty. Have a good day. Evening.